Anthony.
To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Didn't think I knew it, did you?
Oh, I knew you would.
Yeah.
Well, it was intended.
Welcome, everyone, to the Planning Commission meeting of September 4th. Roll call, please.
Chair Hardy.
Here.
Vice Chair Knutson.
Present.
Commissioner Monette.
Here.
Pont.
Here. Next item on the agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on matters that are not on the agenda, which means that we cannot engage in any discussion but are welcome to take any comments on matters not on the agenda at this time. Please limit your comments to four minutes. Thank you. Anyone who'd like to speak at the public forum? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. That takes us to the consent items on our agenda. Members of the commission or the public may request that any item on the consent agenda be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Anything that remains on the consent agenda can be adopted with a single action. We have the only one item, the commission minutes of August 21st, 2018. Is there anyone who wants to have that pulled?
Oh, I would like, is this when I have that pulled to do a modification thing?
A request for reconsideration.
Right.
Yes, this would be the time.
So I would like to pull that.
Okay, so we'll go on to discuss the minutes of August 21st, 2018. This request has been made by Commissioner Monette so that she can change a vote on, which item is that?
Show your microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Let's see.
Five point three, the design review item? From that agenda?
No. Yeah, if it was, is, where is the vote? I don't see it here.
Seven of sixty-seven, about a third of the way down.
Seven of sixty-seven?
Oh, that's a different item.
That's four-three.
I believe it was four-three.
Four point three, yes.
Vote on four-three.
So.
Thank you, yeah.
So that's so that you might change your vote from abstain to no.
That's correct. Do I need to?
This requires a motion for reconsideration from someone who voted to approve the motion. I will move that we reconsider so that she can change her vote. In favor? Would you take the vote, please?
Chair Hardy.
Yes.
Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pont.
Yes.
Monette.
Do I vote on this? Yes.
Yes, you can vote on the motion to reconsider, certainly.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Knutson.
Yes.
Then I think we just repeat the motion that was made to approve the staff recommendation for this item at our last meeting. I see from the minutes that Vice Chair Knutson moved to approve and that the motion was seconded by myself. Commissioner Knutson, you want to redo here? Can you hear me, Commissioner?
I'm sorry, what was that, Commissioner Hardy? I'm Chair Hardy, I'm sorry.
Well, so that Commissioner Monette can change her vote from abstain to no and we can correct the minutes. I'm suggesting that you move once again for approval of the staff recommendation on item four point three from our last agenda, which was a request.
I see, so we're basically doing redo on what we did last week, or two weeks ago.
We're repeating the roll call so that she can change her vote, yes.
Okay, all right. Can, can, has Commissioner Pont made a motion?
No, he has not. Well, have you?
No, doesn't he need to make the motion?
No, anyone can make the motion.
All right, so moved.
Second. Would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Pont.
Yes.
Chair Hardy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knutson.
Yes.
Commissioner Monette.
Yes.
No.
Oh, I vote no. Oh, I see, we're doing that thing. Oh, my God. No, I'm so sorry, I. I thought we were voting for the change, but I see we're just redoing that vote. I'm sorry, my brain doesn't work very well. No.
So recorded.
Then I would, just so that we can move along, I'm going to propose that we approve the minutes for our last meeting with a change in the vote on four point three to reflect Commissioner Monette's vote as no.
So moved.
Didn't he move second? You moved, though. Technically, you're not supposed to, but.
I'm still moving.
Okay.
Moving along.
Okay, so Hardy and Monette. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Hardy.
Yes.
Commissioner Monette.
Yes.
Pont.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knutson.
Yes.
Okay, moving into less turbulent waters, I think. We're on to item five point one. I am going to have to recuse myself. Mr. Sklar has been a friend and client for many years, so Vice Chair Knutson, you're in charge.
Okay. I didn't expect to do this from Colorado and not being there. For this matter, can I temporarily, Ms. Smith turn, or it's not Smith anymore, sorry, Cindy, what's your last name?
Shapopoulos. You can just call me Cindy, how about just Cindy?
Okay, Cindy, can I temporarily relinquish the chair to John, who's actually at the meeting physically from a convenience perspective?
Can you actually do that? I don't think so.
Why don't you have?
I'm happy to conduct the matter from my phone, but I think it would be not as efficient as having John run meeting, run the item since he's there.
We're going to look at the bylaws, but why don't you go ahead and direct staff to give report?
Fantastic, thanks, Cindy. Director House, could you please give report, staff report on item five point one?
Thank you, Vice Chair Knutson, this is Aaron, I'll be doing the staff report. So item five point one is a request by Eric Sklar for a short-term rental permit to rent a single-family home located at sixteen-ten Kearney Street in the medium-density residential district in accordance with the requirements of the short-term rental ordinance. Several of the city's twenty-five short-term rental permits have become available in recent times due to a variety of issues, denial of a renewal, expiring permits, and the majority of them, homes being sold as the permits are non-transferable. Staff is currently working through the waiting list in attempt to find local residents to fill available permit space. As previously mentioned, the property is zoned medium-density residential and short-term rental permits require permit approval from the Planning Commission in the medium-density residential district. In accordance with municipal code, section seventeen-one-three-four-oh-six-oh-A, the Planning Commission shall review and either approve or deny the application after considering the effects proposed, the proposed use would have on surrounding uses and the cumulative impacts within the community. Currently, five of the twenty-five permits are available. The applicant is a city resident, they purchased the home in nineteen ninety-nine, and is the, and is, the property is their primary residence. Additionally, the proposed location has two required off-street parking spaces and is five bedrooms or less. In this case, the applicant is an ideal candidate for a short-term rental permit as the application meets all the criteria established by the city council for a preferred permit holder, and the city would also benefit from the TOT revenue collected from an active short-term rental permit holder. Staff has received numerous letters of opposition in regards to this application, and the opposition is focused on, opposition to short-term rentals in general, the applicant's business interests outside of this application, neighborhood safety, increased traffic, parking, and noise generation. At this time, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to section fifteen-oh-six-one-B3 and accept the required findings and approve a short-term rental permit at sixteen-ten Kearney Street. And I believe the applicant is here, should have any questions, and staff is available to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Planner Heacock. Cindy, do you have a reading on whether I can temporarily relinquish the chair to Commissioner Pont or not?
Just one second.
This is Director House. I feel there is a provision, rule twenty-five, which allow the chairperson to, on matters of procedure or order of business, the chairperson may make a motion and without a second and after calling for objection or hearing none, so order. This is typically regarding voting, but that may allow Commissioner Pont to sit at your behest if requested, and there's no objections.
I have a point of order. If that doesn't allow for a change in the chair, this is not a simple matter, this is somewhat controversial. I'm wondering, should we find out what's legal so that whatever vote happens tonight is a legal vote?
Well, if there's that much concern, Commissioner Monette, and if we're not certain, Planner House, then I'll simply conduct it via the phone, which is allowed under our laws and bylaws. Director House, do you, is there a potential that this could be a controversial move for me to allow Commissioner Pont in my stead to run this section?
I do not think it will be. There's numerous provisions, I just wanted a little bit more time to review them, but we do also have rule thirty whereby any rule of the bylaws may be temporarily suspended by unanimous consent of the commission. So staff will request the commission to vote on whether Commissioner Pont may sit instead of chairperson Knutson, Vice Chair Knutson, to conduct the meeting as the acting chair.
Yes, for item five point one.
Correct.
I move that that happens.
I'll second, a little weird, but I'll second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Monette.
Yes.
Pont.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knutson.
Yes.
And that vote will temporarily allow Commissioner Pont to serve as the acting chair during this item.
Let's see if I can control my will towards power. It's fine, isn't it? I don't need the gavel. Let's use as little trappings as we can. All right. Under our new process, correct, we have the applicant speak? Is there an applicant, is the applicant in the room wishing to speak to their application?
Good evening. So I just want to take a moment, I think most everything was said in our application, but I wanted to point out a few considerations, especially given that we have a few neighbors who are concerned and want to make sure that the neighborhood stays, you know, neighborhood-friendly. So what I wanted to point out is three items, mainly just to, you know, assure you and to assure everyone in the community that it is our intention to reduce any possibility for our application to have any negative effect. It seems that the possible concerns are noise, the use of our hot tub, and having people coming and going from the neighborhood that people are not familiar with. So I wanted to emphasize a few points. First, we would like to take advantage of this opportunity to have a short-term rental in the community so that we can take some work vacations during the year. And the fact is that one of the really promising reasons why, that has been given for short-term rentals and their benefit in the community and for individuals in the community is that you can allow families to, you know, to take advantage, to either trade with other families or take advantage of bringing in a little bit of income so that you can go and have a vacation that you maybe couldn't have afforded otherwise, and that is certainly what we would like to do. Our intention is to go at least twice a year for, you know, it would be fabulous if we could go to Hawaii, for instance, for two weeks, and then rent our house out and then use the money that we get from the rental for the other house or to trade with a family in Hawaii who would have a home that we could trade with. I do understand that we have a minimum amount of nights that we need to rent it out in order to stay compliant, and so we will have to make sure that we can do that. But, you know, if we could go for away for a month, we would just rent it for the month under the normal rules of St. Helena, but we really can't get away for a month at this point in either of what I do or my husband does. So we're just hoping for two weeks. Second, we're interested in only soliciting possible renters who are respectful and conscientious. I mean, we will be renting our home and all of our belongings, and so it's very important to us that there are people who are coming in who are going to respect our home and our belongings and our neighborhood. It's our understanding from the services like Airbnb and VRBO and the other services that could potentially assist with us finding renters, that, that, that people are rated based on how they've rented in other neighborhoods and other, from other families, and so that we can choose someone who has gotten a good rating, we can also interview them, they can write us a letter, you know, stating why they're interested in staying with us, and so we can be very careful how we choose. And I am going to tell you, we are going to be extremely careful for, because, you know, we don't want damage done. But the benefit to the neighbors is that we can also then be very careful about choosing people who are going to be careful about the noise and making sure that they're not causing any disturbances in the neighborhood. The third thing is the hot tub, and I will definitely agree with Cynthia, our neighbor, sorry, can I keep going? That the hot tub is, we have small backyards where, you know, the hot tub is there, and so that is a concern, and I've, and I'm not sure exactly what the answer is because we've never done this before. If we can get people to follow rules and not use it in the evening, that would be ideal. If that is not going to be a possibility, then it may be that we won't be able to include that in our rental, but we are absolutely committed to making sure that that, that is not an issue. So, so I just want to point out those things. If there's any other concerns that you would like to ask me about, I would love to share.
I have a question. Who do you have lined up for your point person? There has to be a person with, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so here's the thing. We haven't done a lot of, of setting up any processes because we didn't know if we were going to end up getting approved, but we understand that we need to have a point person, whether it's a friend or a relative, or, or we need to hire someone. We will have somebody who is, is responsible for that.
And I didn't quite understand what you just mentioned about the hot tub, that if it would be a problem, then you wouldn't include that in the rental. What, you mean you would say it's off limits, but if they weren't going to follow the rules, that, why would that, how do you think that that would make a difference, that they might use it anyway?
Oh, we would just lock it down.
Oh, I see, it's got a lock on it, okay.
Yeah, and if we did end up using it, well, my understanding is, I've done a little research, but it's not, it's not a hundred percent yet in terms of making decisions on our part, but I know that we need to insure it and that we need to have a company servicing it. So it's, it's like a big deal if we're going to put it in, but I don't know how important that is for us to find a renter either, so I think there's going to be a little bit of additional, you know, exploration into, into this issue. But I just want to say, and I've said this to Cynthia too, like, I absolutely don't want her to be disturbed, and I also don't want her to have to be calling, you know, like, oh, there's noise and reporting, like, that's not her responsibility, that's our responsibility, so I just wanted to commit to everyone that that's really important to us. Yeah.
Thank you.
I do have one question. The ordinance, I believe, you say you have trouble with two weeks. The ordinance demands sixty days a year the place actually be rented. I'm wondering how you're going to manage that.
Yeah, so what I was talking about was if we were able to go away for a month and just rent it for one whole month at a time to one family, we could do that under the current city ordinances.
I realize that, but the ordinance calls for sixty days.
So since we want to do shorter, then we're going to have to do multiple, but yeah, we would like to, I mean, we know that we have to comply with sixty days, so.
Actually, if staff could interject here, the sixty-day minimum doesn't apply if it's their primary residence. So as the primary residence, that, that provision does not apply.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you explain that?
So if the home is your primary residence, you're not required to meet the sixty-night per year minimum.
Really?
Really.
So we could do just our two weeks, two weeks?
Yes.
See, that's even better.
That is good. It doesn't say that in the ordinance, does it? Oh, I missed it.
It does.
Thank you.
Good, well, that's even better. All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Open the public hearing. I, yeah, no, we hear from the public, then we discuss, so we hear everybody first, then we talk. I think that's the new process. So, any members of the public who care to speak on this item, please step up to the podium? And we would appreciate your name, but we're not required, you're not required to give it if you don't care to.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Craig Smith. Resident of fifteen-thirty Kearney Street and owner of thirteen-forty Pine Street. Background here, a stay-at-home parent, two kids, seven and five. Would rather not have a rental on the street. It's between two schools, that's why we bought the house there. And the general quality of life just kind of takes a, you know, it's a downer to have strangers cruising around your streets. And in addition, nobody really benefits other than the applicant and the city from tax revenue, applicant income, city income. So for those reasons, just oppose it.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this? Please, step up to the podium if you would.
Thank you. Susan Geary. My husband and I have rented through VRBO, and we know the process, and actually, it is, there's not a lot of vetting being done, and it's, it's great to say that the property will probably only be rented for two weeks out of the year so that the owners can go on vacation, but there's no guarantee that that will happen. And as what Craig has said, and I think there are probably about twelve letters that I read on your website in opposition, out of the thirty-some, that little dots that I counted in the area that was on the website of homes that were notified, so it looks like about a third are in opposition, number one. Number two, I think it's very difficult to vet people, whether they're going to come for a week, two weeks, they could possibly come for one or two nights. The home has three bedrooms. I believe according to your website that they're allowed to have up to eight people rent, and again, we know the backyard, our backyard is on the same side of the street, are very, very tiny. Eight people could be two cars, it could be five, six, seven, eight cars, it could be a girls' weekend, you just never know. Again, between two schools, a block on each side, elementary, intermediate, we have skateboarding, bikers, walkers, joggers, dog walkers, up and down Madrona and on Kearney all day long, especially after three o'clock when the children are getting out of school on weekdays. I would be very, I'm also very interested in who this dedicated person would be to monitor, be available twenty-four-seven, again, according to your website, twenty-four-seven, and within thirty minutes or less that could respond to anything. And if a neighbor has an issue, who do they contact if we don't know who that responsible person could be? That responsible person may have to go somewhere, may have to take a trip at the last minute, business pleasure, et cetera. Who is the backup to the backup? So with all of these considerations, I would certainly hope that, to keep our neighborhood safe and the community safe and the way we've enjoyed our little part of St. Helena, that you would vote no on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Noah? Would you move the microphone down?
Hello, I'm Priscilla Upton, and I live at fifteen-thirty-three Kearney Street, where I have lived for the last forty-seven years. So I think I'm the oldest, not oldest, but the longest resident in the area, and I can tell you that with people who are living in this area, it's been a very stable, good neighborhood, with children coming back and forth, it's a flyway between the two schools, and there are many children who actually live in the neighborhood. I would be deeply concerned about these changes that would occur if we had short-term rental in the neighborhood. That's my concern really, is the safety of the children who live here and who walk back and forth. The traffic issue is another one, and the parking issue is another, and of course, who would be vetting this is another issue, which Susan already brought up. So I just wanted to state that for the record and tell you that I am deeply concerned about putting a long-term rental right on that corner, a short-term rental, rather, on that corner, and thinking that perhaps the city might want to look at other areas for the rest of their permits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Meehan, and I live at sixteen-fifty Kearney Street, so I'm right next door to the Sklar's, and I've been emailing Erica about the hot tub because when someone's in the hot tub and the jets are on and they're speaking, it's really loud, so I have to close my windows and shade, so that's where that came from. One of my concerns is that once a homeowner gets one of these permits, there's no maximum number of nights, and everyone's plans change, and what if in six months, the Sklar's decide, oh, gosh, this is great, they could do it, you know, I could have, you know, different people, you know, two, three nights a week in and out, and that's a big concern for me, so I sent a letter in, but thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dagan Yaniv, and we live at sixteen-thirty-five Kearney Street. I think I'm right behind Mrs. Upton in that I moved to Kearney Street when I was seven years old, and returned to Kearney Street hoping that it was going to be a safe place for my family to be raised. So I ask that you vote no to conserve our neighborhood. My daughters walk to the RLS and to the elementary school. Excuse me, I'm quite nervous to talk in public. And it doesn't feel right, it just doesn't feel right to have a hotel on the corner where my children play. And I thought Kearney was going to stay safe, and that doesn't feel safe, so I think our, I'm not against these kind of things, but I think they need to be not in our neighborhoods where our children are and not close to schools. So please consider no. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else who should, please? Thank you. Sir, anyone else who should, please?
Hi. My name's Suzanne Phillips, and I live at 1540 Kearney Street and have lived there for almost about 33 years now. And I think everybody's made pretty much, I have the same points, the safety for our children, the quality of life of our neighborhood. I rent VRBOs. I've done it myself. I think probably most of us have. But it's our area. I don't think the neighborhood of St. Helena is conducive to that kind of a rental. Like they said, you can't vet who's coming in. And you're just, the safety of our children, you have no idea who's renting there. It could be so many different, every two nights, every three nights, week at a time. And I know that Mrs. Sklar made the point that they would be renting for just a couple of times at two-week periods. And like the young lady just mentioned, I think once you get the idea that you're making some money on doing this, that becomes very attractive. And you can suddenly change your plans and change your lifestyle to accommodate that. And suddenly, we could find that that place is being rented 365 days a year, and we have no control over that. And it's a real concern with today's day and age, the safety of our neighborhood and our children. So I'm opposed.
Thank you. Just want to make sure, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item, either for or against? Hearing none. Close the public hearing.
Does the applicant get rebuttal time?
That's right. They have to have rebuttal time. That's right. That's right. New process. Ms. Sklar?
Yeah. So a couple of things that I'm hearing, safety, traffic, and then also moving to eventually changing our plans. And so there are a couple of things. First of all, if, the last thing I want to do is to get in the business of being a hotel manager where I'm needing to, like, rent our house out on a daily basis. I think if we decided that we wanted to change and go away and make money off of our home and live somewhere else, we would be renting it for a year at a time. But that's just, sounds like a miserable life for me personally, because I am not interested in being a host or a hostess. So I can assure you, I can assure all of you, that that's never going to happen, at least while we live there. And I think you pointed out that this doesn't transfer with the transfer of ownership. So I do want to say that. I also, I want to point out, yes, that I think it's interesting that we are, and I am too, totally concerned with safety of children and having children in our neighborhood. I think what's important to understand is that there are a lot of rentals in the neighborhood. In fact, when I walk around, and I could even share with you, I did a little map just to understand it. Like, there are a lot of homes that are vacation homes, weekends homes, and rentals already in our area. And I wonder if that's what's making us sensitive about that, because we're already seeing, you know, the empty homes, the dark streets at night during the weekends, et cetera. But that, as you know, is happening all over St. Helena. And so for us, this is an opportunity to remain and, you know, still be a vibrant, a vibrant part of our neighborhood and not see that kind of change happen. So I actually think it makes it safer, safer and nicer and better in our neighborhood. And I hope that everyone will see that to be true. But that's something that you'll have to consider.
I have a question. I'm not sure what you mean. There are these empty homes. Are they short-term rentals? A lot of short-term rentals in your neighborhood?
No.
Or a lot of empty homes where there are rentals?
Yeah, we have quite a few homes that are rented on an annual basis.
Oh, okay. So it's, so they're part of the neighborhood?
Including the house that's directly behind us. And then the house that is directly behind Cynthia's is a vacation rental. I mean, not rental, but vacation owned. They come periodically, a family from San Francisco, I think.
And there are other people renting it for the rest of the year? Is that interesting?
Yeah. And I don't know if they rent it out. I just know, I actually don't know the family that shows up, because they usually show up with a large group on a weekend. And then Cynthia and I get to hear it because they have a pool. But yeah, so there's quite a few, there's like three vacant homes right now. There's two that are under construction. There's two brand-new pools that just got installed, so I'm assuming those are going to become vacation-owned homes. So we are seeing a transition in our neighborhood. And I do not want that in the core area of town either. I don't know what we're going to do about that. That's a bigger issue. And as you know, I'm like passionate about addressing that. But in particular, having a couple rentals, renters in our home while we're on vacation, I really don't think it's, especially if we're careful about choosing them, I don't think that that's an issue for safety. But I just, that's my opinion. That's their opinions. But I just wanted to, yeah, point that out. So I guess that's my rebuttal. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have the new process in front of me. Do we give a rebuttal to the rebuttal? No. Okay, good. All right. Close the public hearing. And questions of staff? Do you have any, any questions, Bobby? No. David, do you have any questions of staff on this item?
Thank you, Commissioner Pond. I do not.
I do have one, if you would. We've got about a dozen letters in front of us. The 300 feet amounts to how many notifications?
I don't have that information with me. We generate that, Xenia, the administrative assistant, generates the, generates a map and a list. And I don't have that with me.
Director House?
We didn't have time to fully vet that question. That question came in earlier this morning, and we did not have time to fully vet it.
Okay.
We're down on staff a little bit.
Would it be unfair to say the number's probably somewhere between 40 and 60?
I think that's probably about right.
So, so somewhere...
I looked on your, if I may, I looked on your website.
Go to the podium, please.
Thank you. If I may, I did look on the website, and I looked at the circle that was drawn, and there were little dots. And quite frankly, I probably missed some of them. But I got to about 32 to 35. And on your website, it was a little difficult to find, but I found 12 opposition letters. And I think there are several other, there are a few other people here today or that we've talked to who didn't send a letter. So that's probably about 12 to 15 out of that, even if it's 40 in opposition.
Yeah. I think we did get 12 letters, all said and done. All right. That's the question I had. Bobby, do you want to start the ball rolling here?
Not really. Yeah. I, you know, I really hear the good intentions of the applicant in wanting it to be a painless process and as, you know, as trouble-free as possible. I also hear the neighbors as, you know, saying, you know, you can, you can try to make it trouble-free, but you can't really, you can't really know who's going to be there no matter what questions you ask. And they have concerns anyway, and there's a lot of fear. A lot of the, the safety of the kids is very, is very important to me. That stands out. And I just, when there's so many neighbors who are concerned and unhappy and stressed about the idea and would be living with those concerns and unhappiness and stresses, even if things went well for a while, this not knowing in our current cultural milieu, I just think that we need to listen to the neighborhood in this case. I think there aren't many neighborhoods in the town that don't have children, and that, there are some, though. And I also want to, I don't know if this is the right time, but when this ordinance was first proposed, there was going to be review every year. Perhaps with this much public concern, we need to revisit the ordinance. You know, I think some, you know, it might be up for some changes. We haven't had this much, in my memory, I've been here for, you know, six years, and there has been some public pushback. But this is, this is the biggest number that I recall. So I can't find, finding number three in the resolution. And I, at this point, with, with the public safety issue, even though I'm sympathetic to the sincerity and the integrity of the applicant, I think I, I need to respect what's being said by the neighbors, and I can't support it. And I would like to go back to the, at some point, go back to the ordinance and work on it so that some of these issues can be looked at again and more carefully. But that's where I stand right now.
Okay, Bobby. Vice Chair Knutson, do you, do you have any comments on the project?
Yeah. I think I would mirror some of the comments that Commissioner Minette just spoke of. I really like Eric and Erica. I think they're great members of our community. In terms of, and I hope they continue to live in our community, in terms of sort of the short-term rental, with this sort of level of opposition and knowing, knowing that short-term rentals do generate sort of noise that's, that does impact neighborhoods despite the fact that people can complain, et cetera, and there is a venue for complaining, it doesn't strike me as sort of strong enough. It's sort of an after-the-fact problem. And when the neighborhood essentially unites to say, please don't do this, you know, in our town, as in every town in California, you can rent for a month and nobody can say anything. But if you rent for short periods of time, I think there's, justifiably, we need to listen to those who live full-time in the neighborhoods. I know the, to me, the ordinance, I agree with Bobby, it's separate from this hearing, but it certainly should be looked at again. But again, the ordinance is to approve up to 25 short-term rentals. It's not a requirement to, to have 25 at all times. And I'm also, I would like to listen to the residents, the nearby neighbors and their concerns. I couldn't be supportive.
Okay, thank you. Anytime you talk about land use, you have to balance the needs of the community, the neighbors, versus the needs of the owner. And that's what land use rules do all the time. That's what they're designed to do. So we have got a project in front of us that the neighbors have expressed a high level of concern about it. I mean, anytime you get 20 to 25% of the affected people to show up, that's, that's a pretty high level. I also think that the applicant isn't ready. Last time, we had one of these when the question was asked, who's going to be the backup? Who's going to be the person that's there? They had a name, they had a phone number, everything was there. I hate to say this, I don't think you're ready yet because you haven't filled in all the little boxes. So I would have trouble supporting the application due to the high level of concern and due to the, I don't think you're ready yet. So I'm open to hear a motion.
I guess I make a motion to deny the application? Is that what I think?
So the vote, it's appropriate to hold the vote. The resolution before the commission is for approval. And so hold the vote and then direct staff to bring back a resolution to memorialize that vote.
Bobby, you want to change your motion to do so?
Do I need to do that? Okay. So I make a motion to deny the application and to bring it back in order to be memorialized at a future date?
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Could you read the roll, please?
I'm sorry?
So we could vote?
Oh, yes. Commissioner Minette?
Yes.
Pond?
Yes.
Vice Chair Knutson?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's take a short break, three to five minutes, and get the real chair back in here. And thank you. Okay. Are we still on a short break?
No, we're done.
Oh.
You're back here now to take the gallop back and do what you do best.
Okay.
I said three to five, so anytime after a minute, we'll probably...
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order, and we will resume with item 5.2, consideration and recommendation to the City Council of an Ordinance amending section 17.48 and 17.52 of the Municipal Code. These are the sections that set out the zoning regulations for the Central Business District and Service Commercial. The purpose of this item is to consider modifications to the list of permitted and conditional uses. So without further ado, I'll ask Mr. Heacock to present the staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Hardy. If the commissioner calls on April 17th, 2018, staff brought this item back before the commission and would receive feedback on the proposed changes. And at this time, the commission expressed general support for the changes. However, they wanted to delay any action until completion of the Cosmont Report, which is the retail downtown study. The study has been made public, and the City Council has expressed general support for several of the recommendations contained therein, including clarifying and broadening the list of permitted uses in the Central Business and Service Commercial zoning districts. Staff has identified several issues and concerns in regards to uses that are permitted by right versus those that require a use permit in both those districts. In addition, both the City Council and Planning Commission have expressed concerns with these same issues and their relation to the number of vacant storefronts on Main Street. As an example, clothing stores currently require a use permit in the Central Business District. As a very low-impact use, staff has consistently identified that a clothing store should be a permitted use under the general retail category and not subject to use permit approval. In addition, the code is both overly specific and repetitive. Numerous retail uses are individually listed when they could be combined under a general retail category. Furthermore, individual office uses are listed time and time again when they could be easily classified under a broader just office-use category. In order to resolve many of these issues, staff has amended the city zoning code to modify the list of permitted and conditional uses in the Central Business and Service Commercial districts. Staff is now seeking final input from the commission on the modifications contained in the staff report prior to taking the ordinance changes before the City Council to review and implement. At this time, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the draft ordinance and proposed text amendments related to the permitted and conditional uses in the Central Business and Service Commercial zoning districts, and determine that the proposed text amendments are exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines sections 15061, and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance in order to update and modify existing zoning code regulations related to permitted and conditional uses in the Central Business and Service Commercial zoning districts.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from the commission?
Are there any questions for staff from the commission?
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification, as always. On page 38, under, let's see, there are all the numbers and then there's one, two, third paragraph down, it starts, "Adoption of the 2040 General Plan." At the last sentence, could you explain it to me? Could you explain it to me? Okay, it says, "This effort is intended to consist of minor revisions and modifications to existing policy, not wholesale policy changes, the scope of which were not anticipated or covered in the existing adopted policy documents and therefore passed California SEQA analysis and determinations." First, I'm assuming you do mean P-A-S-T and not P-A-S-S-E-D, but, you know, I think that's what makes more, that's what makes sense, but I wasn't sure. I don't understand what that means, if you could just explain it to me.
So, essentially what that's trying to say is that as part of the upcoming general plan update, we're going to do a comprehensive zoning code update to make the zoning code consistent with the general plan policies contained therein. What we're proposing to do now, there's simple changes to make it clear, easier for staff to use, for the public to understand. And if we were doing wholesale, a comprehensive update of the code, where we're looking at every aspect and how it relates to every other aspect, including the general plan, that would require additional SEQA analysis.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then, I guess, I wondered, when you talked about low-impact uses, because I know the report, they're, what did they call them? The people who have an interest in the study? I can't remember the name for that, the target people, the people they interviewed. They did not include any residents. They only interviewed businesses. So, because I asked them the question at the City Council meeting, if that was the case. The stakeholders, the residents were not considered a stakeholder in their report. And that's on record, if you doubt me. So, when you say here, "As a very low-impact use," I'm wondering, impact on whom? How do we look at it? Is the public a stakeholder in terms of the impact? Or, you know, I don't know how to read this.
These changes were not based on anything in the Cosmont Study, other than to identify where they may have supported the recommendations coming out of it, such as the combination of two permitted uses triggering the need for a use permit that's currently in the zoning code, and Cosmont identified that as an issue. Regarding your position or your question about the impacts to whom?
Yeah.
It's from a general land use standpoint, so it's not community-specific. It's more, a use permit is typically required when a business has operational elements that need to be managed and controlled to minimize their impacts to the community, such as large deliveries, odd hours, or elements of their business that may have the potential to impact a community, such as the sale of alcohol. A clothing store, as the example we always go back to, operates under general standard retail hours, doesn't have large bulky items coming or going from the facility, doesn't sell alcohol or other things that are often identified as generating litter, or people who may be, you know, trying to consume alcohol within a close proximity to the use, those types of things. So, the idea of a low-impact use is from a perspective of land use in general.
Okay, well, then, just one more question with that. You know, if there's a concentration of clothing stores, say, that could impact the other businesses, so, but that's not something, I mean, see, I get confused about what impact is. I mean, that very much, that very well could impact their business if another clothing store, if there are three more jewelry stores, or, you know, what I'm saying. So, that, are those considered impacts? Or are we just, you know, is that...
So, I guess from the, if you look at the requirements for a use permit now, staff wasn't aware of anything that talked about or directly pertained to over-concentration of an individual use. However, that is an element that could be considered in looking at a use permit. But again, generalizing, the changes recommended in the zoning code are, A, to clarify what the requirements are, try to bring it up to a little bit more modernized standards, remove uses like typewriter repair, those types of things, as an example. And also, identify opportunities where the process to require a $5,600, three-month question of opening a new business may be more onerous than the potential downside to allowing that to be a permitted use. So, that was the intent of staff. We are going to forward these items on to the City Council as they've directed. However, we are happy to take individual comments and concerns from the Planning Commission for the council to consider in their review of the changes.
Maybe there could be some place where the impacts could be defined in different ways. I don't know. Because I look at it and I'm saying, ah, you know, what impacts to whom, and et cetera, businesses, people. I don't know if anyone else on the commission shares my concern.
Well, I don't have a definitional concern myself. I tend to think of impacts in the SEQA context, in which impact primarily means physical impacts to the environment and certain particular issues, more subjective impacts, but in those cases, for the public generally, as opposed to particular individuals. Concerns about competitive or anti-competitive effects of zoning, I'm happy to punt to the council myself, that's a public policy question that I think, for me, it just doesn't follow in a category of impacts, per se. But I do think concerns about the potential for over-concentration of businesses are appropriate for a comment that we might ask Noah to forward to the council. My best sense of the direction which the council is headed, based on some things that were discussed at our joint meeting, is that, you know, the primary direction of what staff has proposed here reflects a direction from council. And I've got a number of notes in my copy where I'm going to make some comments that I think are consistent with that direction. But my best sense is that this particular revision that we're looking at is intended to be, I would call it a kind of cleanup of the status quo, as opposed to something that engages directly in the more controversial and kind of problematic subjects that have come up in terms of larger questions about the future of Main Street. I mean, I think there's an opportunity here for us to forward a recommendation that's going to make things easier, at least for some categories of use. But to borrow some words from the planning director, I don't think it's our mission here to touch on any third rails, one way or the other. But that's my thought.
Commissioner Pont, anything for staff or on this theme?
I have some minor edit concerns. It may take a while to get to this one, if you would please. On page 52 of 67...
Let me interrupt just...
This is more general.
I was thinking this is...
My more general concerns are, this does, to some degree, follow some of the recommendations in the Cosmont Study. It makes things simpler, it makes things more clear, both of which are recommended in the study. I think we're doing what we should be doing. Yes, this is a minor cleanup, but we're going to need the practice because, starting next year, we're going to have the whole zoning code to look at. So, anything we do here today might have some minor impact in the downtown, but the big impacts will come as we redo the zoning code based on the new general plan. So, I'm all in favor of this. Let's do it. It gives us some practice. It alerts the community that the bigger elephant is coming down the street and gives everybody a little ability to stop and read these things, understand how they're constructed, so when we go about doing the larger task, we will have done some minor tasks, which is always a good thing.
Thank you. Commissioner Knudsen, it's easy to forget that you're there because I can't see you, but I know you're there.
It's, I feel like I'm a part of the meeting, though, even though I'm not there. You may recall, another time that I did a meeting remotely, I tried to watch it, but the video feed and the phone feed are so off, a couple seconds off, that it was very random. Great comments, guys. I have no further comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Knudsen. With that sort of dialogue with staff, then, I think this is the appropriate time for me to open the public hearing. Mr. McKelley, surely you have something to say?
I don't know yet. I'm Anthony McKelley, 1125 Cornella Drive, but I have an interest in two buildings downtown that our parents left us. My family, the McKelleys, and the Arata family. My father ran where the saint is, where it's between the model bakery and the market. They had a bar there for probably 35 years, back in the 60s. When they redid that building, the front of the building used to be out even with all the other buildings, but they tore it down then and moved it back. If you've been by there, there's probably eight-foot setback, or probably the only building that has that, other than where I call the tunnels down where Via Corona is. I'm just wondering, and the other building we have is at 1336 Oak Street, where the ice cream store is. And I don't know if any of this affects that building or not, but we're not in the Central Business District, I don't think, in that building. My question is, did you address outside seating in this discussion of maybe changing things downtown? That's my question.
So, to respond to the question, these changes are proposed for both the Service Commercial and the Central Business zoning districts, so both of the properties you referenced. And outdoor seating is actually not identified as a use discussion, it's identified as a design review element. And the Planning Commission at their last meeting made recommendations on changes to the design review process, which did include eliminating the need for design review for outdoor seating. However, there was some direction and concern, and we will be bringing that to the City Council in the next 30 days, and I will send you a notice of that meeting.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This would be the time, I think, for each of us in turn to go through our edits slash Commissioner Minette, would you like to start?
Okay, I think, I had a bunch, but the only two that I wanted to say, I think, under permitted uses, there are a couple that I have problems with. And, pardon?
Which one?
Okay, on page 49 of 67, I was going to say, yeah. Okay, the beauty shop parlor one, and the, where is it? The auto repair one. And my concern is, I think that there are toxins involved in those businesses and the cumulative effect of the toxins on the sewer, or, you know, other aspects of that. I think, I think because of that, that these should be conditional-use businesses. And, you know, I have also feelings about the workers in these places, but that's not appropriate here, I suppose. I'm looking on page 49 of 67, beauty shop, parlor, shop, including manicures, pedicures...
I got that. Where did you see the automotive?
Okay, I'll tell you...
I think that's on 52 under conditional uses, on page 52.
Repair shops? No, 51.
Automobile sales, service and repair.
This says repair shops, excluding the repair of heavy equipment. So, I just assumed that was auto.
No.
Heavy equipment's separately defined from automotive.
Locker房.
Well, I don't know. What does that mean, then? Maybe, I obviously misunderstood. What does that mean?
It means that's a specific repair shop for automotive. What I think you're saying is you would like to ensure that heavy equipment repair is also a conditional use, which staff completely agrees with in the Service Commercial and Central Business zoning districts.
Well, what does repair shop mean?
Means a place where you get your vehicle repaired?
Right. So, it says repair shops excluding the repair of heavy equipment.
So, that's what I'm saying, so it's...
All the other, all the other equipment is, you know, you can repair cars, but the only thing you can't repair is heavy equipment.
That's correct.
So, that's under permitted use, on page 51.
51 of 67, right?
I'm sorry, I thought you were specific to automotive repair.
That's what I inferred.
That's more like small engine shop, repair shop. However, if the...
Well, even so, you know...
Sure, so if the direction is that those types of uses are not appropriate in the Service Commercial zoning district, staff is happy to forward that and frankly, doesn't disagree.
Oh, okay, but my point, I mean, that's another thing, but my point was it shouldn't be permitted, it should be conditional, for those reasons. Okay, so moving them to the other would take care of that. Okay, so that's my concern about those two.
Beauty shop should be included.
And we agree.
I'm just going to call the question, wouldn't those uses, at this point, require an industrial general permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board for purposes of waste discharge? Or do they, because they're hooked up to the city sewer, then come under the municipal general permit, however that works?
So, typically, repair shops actually haul their waste off-site, so it is not disposed of on the site, and that's a, they are regulated. However, I don't believe they would be subject to the disposal permit for the water, wastewater, I'm sorry, the Water Quality Control Board, because there's no, there's no waste products leaving their site. And then, this gets into more specifics. If they use certain types of solvents in their cleaning tanks...
But isn't that what you have to do as an identified best managed BMP for purposes of qualifying for the industrial general permit?
Again, I think the wastewater permit for discharges is related to things that are going down the drain, whether it's a sewer or the storm drain. It's my understanding, nothing that comes from a repair shop would do that?
Oh, that's not true. I don't care if the stuff leaks, the rain comes and washes it off the driveway and stuff into the...
That's different, so that's the city's permit issued through the Water Quality Control Board, which does have BMP standards for how they deal with cleaning things up and those types of things. I'm talking about storage and disposal, formal disposal of their products. They change your oil, they keep the oil on-site, they truck it out to a...
The permit I'm thinking relates to stormwater.
That's correct.
And they wash their hands in the sink, and they wash the, you know, rags, and you don't know what they're doing.
Sure, so that, those are the types of things that are regulated through the permit that's issued from the Water Quality Control Board to the city to ensure we require certain types of uses and other, you know, if there's a spill in the street, those types of things are managed in certain ways. That is separate from the decision regarding one of these types of businesses being conditional or permitted in different zoning districts. If they require that permit, they require it separate from the city's regulations.
Okay, but if they're permitted, I mean, then again, it'd be accumulative. If they weren't, if it weren't conditional, then any number could be set up, and that would be accumulative effect as well. So, I don't know how that fits in with what you just said, but is that...
Well, I had, I mean, the reason for asking the question is that I think...
Well, I had, I mean, the reason for asking the question is that I think, in truth, in terms of how those concerns are addressed, and I believe Director House just said the same thing, it's not going to matter whether it's a permitted use or a conditional use. The whole regulatory apparatus for protecting water quality comes really out of the Clean Water Act as applied and enforced by the state, and that ends up getting formatted in these different general permits. So, I don't personally believe that moving something from permitted to conditional makes a difference with respect to those concerns. The question of accumulation or cumulative is different, but...
Because what you were just talking about is only storage, I mean, being, you know, how to get rid of the...
No, the general permits that we're talking about address principally those practices on-site and related infrastructure that determine what gets into the storm drain, or otherwise runs off the property.
But something does get in, I mean, but even though it's regulated, that's why I'm thinking if you have any number of those businesses, it may be, it seems to me, we should look at it first to see how much, you know, how many we have already, and what impact of the additional amount of whatever it is, washing your hands, you know, putting it in, washing it off the pavement in front of the, in front of the shop, might have a bad effect on the wastewater and...
It could, but like Buster said, and Noah said, they are, they are regulated...
Not for that.
On, they're regulated, yes, they are. Storage, use, disposal.
Right, of the, yes, but I'm talking about stuff that leaks.
That comes under storage or use.
It does.
All that's regulated, yeah.
I think the concern Commissioner Manette is voicing is if it's a permitted use, then there, she has concerns over the concentration of a use type that may result in an increase in the number of spills and those sorts of things that then have to be cleaned up under the requirements of our stormwater permit.
And, and I doubt, I hugely doubt, that we'd become the auto repair center of Northern California. We're not going to have 10 auto repair shops in a row. It's just, it's just so unlikely.
What about these beauty, what about the beautician shops? There are a lot of toxic chemicals that are used in these shops, and that's the same thing. They go down the sink, they're rinsing hair, you know, I'm just thinking that it might not be, it might be a good idea to have it be a conditional use so that we can check how many other like businesses are in the area, will this extra amount of, you know, hair dye and other things going into the wastewater be an issue? That's all, I just think it's...
And here's where I have to slow down, because I don't think it matters whether staff comes back and tells us we have five of this category of use, or 10, or 20. If you ask the question, will one more make a difference to water quality at the waste treatment plant, there won't be anyone present who can tell us.
No, we'd have to have an analysis.
We'll never get an answer.
We'd need a water analysis, I mean, we need an analysis.
There won't be an answer for that question.
Are you sure?
Yeah, as a practical matter, because there, you, there won't be the resources available to do cumulative site-specific effluent quality analysis to answer, or stormwater quality analysis to answer the question. Those questions are all being addressed in the aggregate, in a much larger way, which is how the state develops the standards that go into the permits, and we'd have to have Eric, our public works director here, to explain to us what kind of reporting they have to do at the waste treatment plant before they can discharge anything out of that plant. And I assume, without knowing, that the general permit for the city's stormwater system requires some sampling and analysis. That would be true for any private project that had to qualify. Construction projects now, except for the tiniest ones, you have to test the runoff multiple times during each major event over the course of the season, do the lab work, submit it to the state. There's, there's this whole complex and costly system that's going on, but it's not one that's organized in a way that would make it feasible for us to answer the kind of question that you proposed. I mean, I think, I have a couple thoughts. I can go either way on the beauty parlors, although I don't think pollution would be the criterion that would push me one way or the other. On the subject of equipment repair, my own concern is that if we make it harder for businesses like that to locate in St. Helena, we're limiting this community's ability to be a place that provides needed services to the agricultural community that surrounds us. And, because that's, that's where most of your equipment repair demand is going to come from. And I'm reluctant, and I don't think we're a terribly big market for that as it is. I mean, I'm trying to think of what I know about where one might go to get something fixed.
Depends on what it is.
Yeah. John York, who could fix anything if he felt like it, is retired. You know, I don't think there are very many options right now, to be honest. I mean, I can't think of a single general equipment repair business.
No.
There are some automobile repair businesses, and there's at least one, maybe two, welding and fabrication shops where you can get certain kinds of things fixed, but not anything and everything. So, those are my thoughts on that.
All right, thank you. I'm just worried about lead in the drinking water.
If you would, unless she wants to go over yours, Lester.
Please.
Okay. If you could turn to page 52 of 67, and notice that under permitted uses in the service commercial district, we have used merchandise stores with no off-hours or exterior drop-off, right? But then if you flip over, and this is just as an example, if you flip over to conditional uses, there is no used merchandise stores with exterior drop-off. Now, I understand why that was done, but then if you flip back to 52 of 67, and look under conditional uses in the core, a used merchandise store with no limitations is down there. 48 of 67, sorry. You turn to 48 of 67, you've got used merchandise store with no limitations. I recognize that's a conditional use, but if it's allowed for conditional use in the core business district, it should be allowed as a conditional use in the service commercial district. So, either the, either the limitation wording from the permitted use in the service commercial district should move to the central business district, or you should allow in the service commercial district, use, used store with a drop-off. Because as it is now, somebody could come in to the central business district and say, "I want a used store, and I want to have a drop-off box." And we'd have no way to say no, but if somebody came and put a store in the service commercial district and wanted a used box, he'd have to say, "No, you can't do it under any way, shape, or form in the service commercial." So, I would be all in favor of copying over the limitation language to the central business district. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that.
Staff, that does lead to a question of, is the commission interested in allowing donations to be accepted at any location within the community?
On my druthers, I would say no in the central business district, yes in the service commercial, if I was king of the world. Yes, it is. I'm just not close enough for anybody but me to hear, which is perfect, no.
As a conditional use, to be able for us to regulate hours of operation, hours of drop-off, location of drop-off, making sure it's clean, tidy, no loitering.
In the, in the service commercial, yeah, but not in the central business district. That's one. The other thing was, you had, on page 53 of 67, you had in the middle of the page, "Music, entertainment is not accessory to the approved use," and the notation is, "Leave, modify, or delete." I'm presuming that's still up for discussion, in which case, once again, if it was my druthers, I'd just leave it.
Can you say where you are?
I am on page 53 of 67, about in the middle of the page, number three, for conditional uses in the, is this central business or service, this is service commercial, isn't it? No.
Start music?
Yeah. Music, entertainment, which is not accessory to the approved use and/or audible beyond the confines of the building in which such music or imitation is being performed.
Yeah, I had a question about that, too, yeah.
This is under eating and drinking establishes as regulated. This would not be allowed.
Well, I have some comments on that particular item, too. Bobby, did you want to go ahead?
No, go ahead.
Well, I looked at this, and I think the same language appears somewhere in central business district as well.
Under conditional uses?
We're not enforcing it, and I'm not sure it makes any sense. I do not think it is possible, as an example, to walk past Goose and Gander and not hear the live music when they have a live music. I don't find it problematic, but I'm very uncomfortable with having a standard that we not only don't enforce, but I'm going to hazard the guess, don't really intend to enforce in the circumstance I just referred to, unless you're getting a lot of complaints, but I'm thinking you're not. And then I think about sort of what I hear out of doors generally, and, well, I'll preface this by saying, I think the volumes at Goose and Gander are pretty well-regulated, and that's one reason it doesn't bother me personally, and, and I don't think we should have an ordinance that puts them in weekly violation myself. Music from events at Farmstead is routinely audible some distance from Farmstead.
And nobody's pursued that?
I don't, certainly if there's a band playing at Anis Cantina, you can hear that from the street. So, this whole notion of prohibiting music which is audible beyond the confines of the building, I think that's just an unworkable standard.
That's part of our noise ordinance, that's exactly what it says.
Let me ask you a question, Lester.
I think it's completely unworkable.
Do you have a problem with the first part of it? Which is, is not accessory to the approved use?
No, I don't have a problem with that.
I would think, I would think, I would think music at Goose and Gander would be accessory to the approved use. Music at Farmstead would be accessory to the approved use.
Yeah, no, that's not my issue.
It's the outside business.
It's the how the noise standard is defined there. It's completely unworkable.
Can we default to, what is it, 70 decibels outside the building, something like that?
I'd like to comment on this.
Please.
As a matter of fact, there have been a lot of complaints to both of those places from me, and when I, I talked to the manager many times about Goose and Gander, I'm talking about their amplified music, not the live, you know, sometimes I guess they have live music, they have amplified music a lot of times there, and it's really, okay, so, and Farmstead, I live half a mile, you know, from Farmstead, and it's in my house when they have, so I've walked over there, and I've asked them to turn it down several, many times, and they're always very friendly and very cooperative, and they turn it down. So, if nobody complains, then, I mean, my sense is that there is an assumption, I mean, there is an acceptance of the lack of concern of these businesses, that they might be disturbing someone. And, because we have, our norm is, "Go ahead, businesses, blast it out. If someone complains, then respond." But there's no sense of any community responsibility from these places, these businesses, to maybe consider people in the neighborhoods who may not complain, but who maybe are being impacted in a negative way. And I would like to set a norm, if you have something like this, that's setting the bar where I think it should be, so that if there is a complaint anyway, you can say, "Look, you know, it's part of our ordinance." Even if, even if you can't make sure it's within the walls of the place, you can, if it's going into someone else's home, and they're trying to sleep, or they have a sick kid, or whatever, or they just don't want to hear it, they have a basis upon which to complain, and most businesses will be very, very, you know, respectful in that, in their response. But, so that's one piece, but my main piece is that I think we should encourage businesses to be community-sensitive, and to not be blasting music so loud that it's loud in my house, which is a half a mile away.
Well, we do have a noise ordinance, right?
I know, and the noise ordinance says the same thing.
It seems to me, following the same thought path you are with respect to what's acceptable and what's not, Bobby, at least to some extent, because I think if the music is so loud that you can hear it inside another structure, that's a different matter. I don't think it really makes sense to make the standard, if I can hear it as I walk by their front door on the street, they're in violation. That just literally doesn't make sense to me.
I'm okay.
But if you or anyone else can hear it inside their home, it's too loud. I'm there. And I, having said that, I will just share the observation that, although I haven't noticed it so much the last couple of years, for most of the time I've lived on Tainer Street, I could hear the loudspeakers, the PA system at the high school every time there was a football game.
Why it has to be that loud?
So, and I've never liked that. I think, I'm not, I'm not, I think I can fairly say, as noise-sensitive as Commissioner Manette, I enjoy a certain amount of the sound of the community when I'm outside my doors.
I don't disagree with you.
I actually find it...
I'm talking about inside.
Often cheerful, but inside the house is another matter.
So, can we maybe doctor this, then? Music, entertainment, which is not accessory to the approved use, all right, everybody buys that, and/or exceeds the standards in the city of St. Helena, noise ordinance, blotty, 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 blotty.
Personally, I think it's fine the way that...
Whatever section that is. Sorry, I don't know about blotty, 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 blotty.
Well, okay, I'll tell you what, our noise ordinance really needs to work, and that's been something that I've been asking for, for like, three years, and the city council has been... has been amenable to doing that, and when we're doing the overall comprehensive thing, the noise ordinance is going to be changed, especially in terms to permits, to blast your music until midnight, or, you know, on weekdays, if you have a permit, or for however long, being approved only by the police chief and that sort of thing. So if you would feel more comfortable changing that to something that you just described, I could, I would support that. I don't have any problem leaving it the way it is, but, because I think it's, that's a...
I will ask our invisible commissioner if he has any thoughts to share on this. Commissioner Knudsen?
I'm here.
I knew you were.
And I've been enjoying the conversation, I have to say. You guys are thinking about this very thoughtfully. I really don't have any additional comments on top of this. We all have our concerns, right? Whether it be noise or other areas. But I think I tend to agree, I'm not sure if it was you, Chair Hardy, that, or was it Commissioner Pot, who's mentioned that this was sort of, clean up what we currently have, not try and influence policy necessarily for the new general plan and things that occur after that is adopted? Did I capture that correctly?
I think that was my characterization, yes.
Yeah. And so I also, I concur with that, Chairman Hardy. I'm not sure we need to fine-tune at this point, given the fact that we'll be fine-tuning add-in for an item very shortly.
Well, on this line item, then, we're not going to delete it. Are we going to leave it as is for further discussion, add a more comprehensive review? Are we going to modify it now? I'm fine with Commissioner Pot's proposal. I think a simple reference to the noise ordinance would suffice.
So essentially incorporating the allowances of the decibel ratings, referencing the noise ordinance as allowed, on the property, not based on the confines of the building?
Yeah. Thank you. So that came up in your comments originally. Should you continue? Do you have more for us?
I'm pretty much done. We've been over this thing several times, so...
Very good. Commissioner Knudsen, do you have anything on your list that we haven't already discussed or where we failed to give you an opportunity to chime in?
No, I didn't need to chime in. This is making me completely rethink my meeting strategy. Just kidding. I don't have a meeting strategy.
What, you're talking about the vice chair in a box?
Exactly right. Just press the button every once in a while. I have my standard canned responses. No, you guys have covered everything that, that was, things that I'd noticed, so.
I have one more question. Is that okay?
Sure. Commissioner Manette?
It's very little. Okay, it says here on page 54, nursery, lawn, and garden supply stores with retail sales. I was just wondering what other kind there is. I mean, I don't, I didn't...
It could have been, it could be a wholesale nursery.
Well, that's, this is just, oh, that's not considered retail?
No, wholesale is, members of the public are not welcome. You have to be a commercial business to buy from wholesale nurseries.
Okay, so the wholesale stores are not included in this anymore? I mean, this essentially, with...
Or are they subsumed in that category?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it could be a wholesale store that also has retail, so basically a nursery that supplies to both commercial and retail customers. You could not be a nursery that only supplies to commercial customers.
Nursery, garden supply, oh, you can't. So you have to have retail?
That's correct. We added that to clarify. That's right.
Okay, so no wholesale nurseries allowed anymore? You have to have retail?
Good catch. I'm not sure that we want to do that.
The idea was...
Which page are we on, excuse me?
Page 54.
This is a conditional use, but the idea was that you are going to allow retail sales if you are a nursery.
About two-thirds of the way down.
So you have to, I mean, it's imperative. You can't be there unless you have retail.
If you wished to be a wholesale-only nursery in St. Helena, in which zoning district would you locate? An agricultural district? Do we have that as an agricultural use?
That could likely be an agricultural use. I'm not looking at the ag zoning, but staff found that having a wholesale business not open to the public in the service commercial zoning district was not appropriate?
Yeah, well, I suspect it may be in some significant way inconsistent with the general plan policies and purposes for the district. That part makes sense to me. Excluding them from the city altogether does not.
So what I'm hearing is that we should ensure that there is an allowance for wholesale nurseries at some zoning district, potentially ag or industrial.
Yes.
But you do support the change from the, for the service commercial?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. I'm not so sure I do, because some of these service commercial districts are on or adjacent to the Highway 29 corridor, right in front of the industrial district, which frankly, I think would be a fine place for a wholesale nursery, particularly ones that deals in vines. There's certainly areas of service commercial I wouldn't care to see a wholesale nursery, but right in front of the industrial district?
Well, I'm thinking, and I haven't undertaken, I mean, the whole, I think, premise of this enterprise here tonight is that what's in front of us is consistent with the current general plan, and we don't, we're not entertaining anything that would require a general plan amendment or the law.
But to Commissioner Pot's concern, there are, the references as a vine-specific nursery typically do have retail sales as well as provide to their commercial clients. So it's, the goal is to try to ensure that anybody would respond to the local serving direction and those types of elements that are in the existing general plan to broaden. So you could still have commercial clients, but you must allow retail sales as well. But again, happy to not make that recommendation a requirement. It just feels more in keeping with the purpose of the service commercial land use designation of both the general plan and the zoning.
You know, I thought that's where you were coming from, so I'm, I'm thinking this is the sort of thing we, I don't know if we're going to get much of an opportunity to fix it in the general plan as it comes our way, but I see this as an item to follow-up on, myself.
I'm fine with that.
So if, if I may, I'm going to go to my comments here. I'm looking at page...
To get clarity, is there support for that change, and then also take a note to follow-up on it, or is it, "Don't make the change and follow-up after"?
I support making the change and then following up to make sure we're not excluding wholesale nurseries.
And I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Page 44, I see in the list of permitted uses, general retail, the sale of goods in small quantities, et cetera, and then, in conditional uses, we have variety store. And maybe I'm missing something, but general retail as subscribed sounds to me exactly what I thought a variety store was. So should we simply be deleting variety store from the list of conditional uses and permitting general retail?
Staff's intent with this was to create a general retail definition that multiple retail uses, such as clothing stores, shoe stores, could fall under, but the intent of leaving variety store was to address the concerns over souvenir shops and those types of elements that, there are concerns built into the general plan and the zoning code to preclude or at least require use permits for, but we are trying to check our definition of variety store right now to see how that may or may not fit into the direction of the commission. If you would just bear with us for one moment.
Certainly.
What store was the variety store, what page was it?
Variety store is near the, it's at page 48.
So there is no definition for variety store currently in the zoning code, so the direction could be to create one, or as you mentioned, just delete, keep it under, look at it as a general retail use, but then also ensure that the other defined uses, such as souvenir shop and things, would capture the intent.
What's the definition for general retail, then?
Well, here, it appears incorporated into the ordinance, "The sale of goods in small quantities directly to the consumer except those uses prohibited in 17.48.060, which prohibits, prohibits..." I don't think we have that in this agenda item.
Nope, missing.
You're going to have to help us out there.
I should have brought my copy.
Yeah, CBD.
It's the list of prohibited uses. Following uses are specifically prohibited in the central business district, formula restaurant, outlet stores, discount stores, or stores devoting commercial area gross sales or inventory to the sale of second-quality, irregular, or discontinued merchandise, or to the liquidation of a merchant's or manufacturer's stock, souvenir shop, t-shirt shop, and then time shares.
Okay, that's your variety store, then?
Yeah.
What's that the definition of?
Prohibited uses in the central business district. So that's 17.48.060.
So those are all referenced in the general retail definition that says, "General retail is this, except these things that are prohibited."
Except for this. So we want to be real careful about that list of what is prohibited.
Well, if I understand correctly, the intent here in this new language on page 44 is to have something that affirmatively describes a multiple category retail, describes and permits a multiple category retail store. Would it be more clear, perhaps, to say, retail sales of any of the categories specifically enumerated as permitted uses but prohibiting? And variety store has at least, in common usage, a meaning, and we had one, that was Ben Franklin, and its loss is still much lamented. So that's why I got a little bit confused, and you do intend something different from variety store, but I think it could be better worded.
So the direction, so we just pull up a general definition, which I have a land use dictionary, I'm sorry I did not bring it, but, general direction, we have a general definition of variety store, sells a wide range of inexpensive house-cold goods, often have product lines including food and drink, personal hygiene, small home and garden tools, office supplies, decorations, electronics. So it's almost like a hardware store or a drugstore in that element, and what I'm hearing is that there is an interest in allowing that type of a store, subject to the prohibitions included in the prohibited uses.
That's where I am.
Yeah, because a variety store also, at least Spouse Rights and Ben Franklin had textiles. They had materials, scissors, thread. You can't even buy a pin or a pincushion in Napa County anymore. You have to do it from line. They've closed the one, the one store in, Dry Gothe Store in Napa, so, yeah.
No, and we're not likely to see another one, but to the extent that we keep some hope alive in the zoning text.
Well, and just to that point, this would allow a combination of uses under the changes, which would incorporate this type of a use with another use to broaden it out, so...
Yeah, and that makes sense to me, and I think we just say, "That's what we're doing." This is a category to include multiple use, multiple permitted retail uses.
So you'd include that in the definition, not necessarily in this section?
Well, no, I would include that.
You'd put it in this section?
I would say, yeah.
Yeah, I would just put it in the definition under general retail.
Either way, either way.
Wait, so what's happening to the variety store? Is that going to stay where it is?
Yes.
We'll keep it and then add a reference to the prohibitions to clarify.
Okay, got you.
But then also, where here is broaden, broaden and look to clarify the definition of general retail.
Yes, and then, going on to conditional uses, and I'm looking now at page 46, I see consignment shop. I think of consignment shops, at least in St. Helena, as being focused on clothing, and it's not obvious to me why we would have consignment clothing as a conditional use when we have all other clothing stores as permitted.
So it gets back to the concern, second-hand stores often do generate impacts from a land use standpoint, the donations, how are they taken, those types of things. I think, to your point, consignment shops are a little different than second-hand store?
Yes, well, they're different from donation-based sales, for sure. The term consignment means the owner of the clothing gets paid when the item is sold.
So if the commission doesn't have the concerns, would that be a conditional use?
Well, honestly, I don't, I don't, yeah.
Boy, there is a...
Main Street rents are going to have to drop dramatically before we're going to see a proliferation of consignment shops.
So La Boue is not a consignment shop, that's a donation shop? Just Lowlos is a consignment shop?
Lowlos is consignment.
Yeah, Lowlos is a true consignment shop.
They have lots more...
La Boue is donation.
Right, and Lowlos has, they have more than clothes, but I guess it's primarily clothes.
Yeah, but they are consignment. They do consignment. That's not the only thing they do, but they do do consignment.
So that was my comment there. We've already touched on music. Won't repeat that. Then, on the next page, 47, we've got some language that I think is inherently confusing. We have, as a conditional use, oh, maybe, I'm just confused because I didn't read it carefully or not. We've got drinking establishments, provided the following are not allowed. So at six, formula or takeout food establishments are not allowed in a drinking establishment, or as a drinking establishment. We couldn't have a formula drinking establishment.
That's how it's working.
That's correct.
Is a cocktail considered a formula drink?
Oh, well, now we're getting into the difference between, is a recipe a formula?
Mm-hmm.
These digressions we have to save for after the meeting.
What is the asterisk? Where is the reference after establishments?
Well, it comes later on. I looked for it. It's at the bottom of page 48.
The next page, yeah, got you.
Okay, so...
It's at the end of the section.
Makes sense.
Then, one thing I noticed generally was an effort to consolidate offices into a single category, but it doesn't look to me that we carried that through consistently. So my first note, off-site winery offices with non-public wine tasting. Well, we have this as a conditional use because of the wine tasting, because it's not public, it's offered to wine distributors and wine merchants only. It is not clear to me why that's here as opposed to with all the other offices. I'm looking, on page 47, it's the next-to-last item on the page.
So I think staff was just hesitant to include that in the general consolidation of uses, given some of the concerns regarding winery uses expressed by the commission and the public, however, if the recommendation is to incorporate it, because as you say, it is an office use, very similar to other office use types.
I'm thinking, when you look at this, non-public wine tasting. I'm a member of the XYZ Wine Club, ergo, I'm... ergo, I am not a member of the general public, I'm a member of the XYZ Wine Club.
Well, the text says tasting may be offered to wine distributors and wine merchants.
But it doesn't say only.
That would be an appropriate change, actually, whether it stays conditional or, or not.
And without that only, you could be the member.
Yep.
But are you suggesting that people drink wine in offices all over? They probably do, but, I mean, what do you, what do you mean?
Well, people do all kinds of things in offices, offices.
Especially attorney's offices.
Well, let's not get into that. But as an example, uh, you know, our office category is defined generally as applying to, uh, you know, providing business and professional services. And, uh, and yet we have surveyors called out separately, um, engineering called out separately. I don't really think engineers and surveyors are different for these purposes from any other kind of professional service in office, so I'd, I'd like to see that consolidation. Um, I'm not, I don't feel all that strongly one way or the other about the winery office subject, although if there's no tasting at all, it definitely belongs in the general office category. If, you know, one wishes to allow, um, commercial tasting, meaning for distributors and merchants only in a winery office, then, hey, I, I can, I, I don't see any problem with calling that out and requiring a conditional use permit, I thought it was worth some discussion. We've covered, yeah, no, those, that's really, well, there was just one other thing that caught my attention, um, looking at winery tasting rooms, which are a conditional use. I'm not sure why we limit food to no cost and made off premises if we're requiring that the facilities are approved by Napa County Environmental Management. I mean, they, they regulate food preparation quite strictly, in fact, even for things prepared off-premise, the requirements are kind of startling when you have to look at them, which I have. It's on the list of conditional uses, so it gets scrutiny. I'm, I'm not, the purpose of limitations, the two that I called out, aren't, aren't clear to me.
I think. It was, it was in place.
Is this page forty-eight at the, um, on the second half of the paragraph on winery tasting rooms?
I believe this was put in place to limit, um, some of the more exuberant wine tasting arrangements, where you essentially come in, sit down, and have a, have a meal. That's the only thing I can think of that makes any sense, and I'm not sure this isn't one of those subjects that maybe we want to deal with as part of the new general plan zoning code.
Point well taken. I, I would ask, or suggest that, that we ask staff to flag this one for follow-up.
Agreed, it could be one of those sensitive areas.
Yep.
Also, on page fifty, you, this is probably obvious, but you crossed out home health, and it's just healthcare equipment and services. That's because healthcare equipment and services comprise, comprises home health as well?
That's correct, and also if you're offering home health, health services, you essentially have an office use that the providers go to the individual homes, and it's not, there's no equipment essentially that you're, I don't have the definition in front of me, but that was the intent, it's already captured, and generally in-home health services are provided in the locations, remote locations.
Care, equipment, and services, or and/or services, based on what you just said?
So that's and services, it would be both.
And service, okay. So they both have to come together, the equipment and this, no, so the services.
Either one.
Could, okay, so those people, well, it should be and, or then, to, to.
Sure.
To be, to mean the home health people can still do their thing.
Perhaps there should be a comma then, home healthcare, comma, equipment and services.
Well, it's and/or services, the services is the key here, because apparently home health people don't do anything about equipment, they just do the services. So this would allow them to do their services and allow, you know, and/or equipment and service, that's what, just based on what Noah just said, that's what I.
And you can have home healthcare without any equipment or.
Yeah, so staff saw the home healthcare providers that don't offer equipment as being an office use, because essentially you go to work, you get your assignments, you go out to the homes where you're providing the care, you go back, you check in. This would be a location that's also providing equipment, but either way, they're both permitted.
Okay.
Okay, it just doesn't seem clear to me.
In case you really do need the comma, I think.
There, I would just say and/or would make it clear to me, but, you know, if everyone else is fine, I, who am I? I still feel bad for shoe repair.
I have one more question, just about how we're parsing out the categories. We've made home furnishings a permitted use, I think in.
Service commercial.
In service commercial, they require a use permit in.
Central business.
Central business. We don't have antique stores anywhere in service commercial, and.
We've got antique stores in central business.
We have antique stores as a conditional use in. Central business, and I'm just, uh, I, once we look at the broad category of home furnishings, I'm not sure what point there is to, uh, making a distinction between new, kind of new, really not new at all, we're gonna say it's old, and it's really, really old.
The only thing I can think of is there are certainly antiques out there that would not fall under home furnishings.
So I, I just to chime in, from a land use perspective, it is very common to distinguish between, especially in the furniture context, new furniture, antique furniture, and used furniture, that's a very common kind of land use distinctions to make, uh, because if you think about those types of stores that you visited, they are distinctly different from each other. Is the direction to look to provide antique stores in the service commercial?
I'm, I'm, you know, sort of going back to your comment that there was some intent here to try to simplify things with attention to impacts, and maybe I'm just not thinking very carefully, but although I see distinctions image-wise and maybe experience-wise, what it's like walking into a new-only, used versus antique, um, and, and that, yeah, that's part of the experience. In terms of impacts, um, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit.
So with used furniture and new furniture, um, kind of the ways that those goods are precluded or gotten by the, the, uh, business owners often require big deliveries, um, may, furniture stores stay open later than most retail uses, so they are usually in areas specific, like central business would be definitely limited to conditional uses because you want to look at it. Service commercial, I would say, we made, we made a recommendation to make furniture stores permitted uses.
Right.
Uh, but used furniture to be a regulated use, or maybe we didn't, we didn't catch it in the service commercial, but oftentimes you want to regulate those, even though it gets to your point of how are you getting your goods, it, sometimes they're distinctly different than a secondhand goods store generally, and so people show up with their furniture, hey, you interested in buying this, it's, uh, they often have kind of odd locations for collecting their goods, and it may not be set up with a loading dock that a regular furniture store would have, but so, there is potential for use impacts, um, staff can take a closer look at it.
I, I just wanted to understand better, that, that, that makes sense to me, that answers my question, I don't have any change to request or propose there. Are there any more thoughts from visible or invisible commissioners?
My thought is let's not talk about it anymore.
This is your last chance, Commissioner Knudsen.
Careful.
Yeah, watch out, you guys are so thorough, I don't actually need to add much at this point, very impressive.
I'm afraid we're never gonna see you again.
Pedant tree is the word that comes in.
It's funny looking through these categories, I have to say, tailor and dressmaking, for example, okay, I mean, these, many of these are still sort of archaic, honestly, but that's okay.
Well, I, I'll go back to the agenda since I think that's the easiest way to track direction from staff. I would be delighted if someone moved a determination that the proposed text amendments are exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline, Section one five zero six one.
And just before we do that, staff, we'd like to summarize the direction to ensure we got it all.
Oh, well, well, I thought we'd do that at the next part, but. Can we dispose of SEQA?
In general, or just?
Text amendments, it, um, as presented and discussed, that would be the only thing I would add there.
Is, is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Is there a second?
Does the black box went to second?
All second, thank you.
Actually, the box looks pink on the outside, but I'll leave that where it is.
Ms. Sappophilus, would you take the role, please?
That was Commissioner Ponce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Director House, would you like to sort of relay back your notes, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, please do.
So to summarize the direction that was just supported and to recommend to the council, uh, there is direction to clarify the definition of repair shops regarding small engine repair, and identify that they are conditional in the service commercial and prohibited in the central business. There were some questions about should beauty parlors be a permitted or a conditional use, and we will direct that to the council to make the ultimate decision.
Because.
Sure. Because of toxic concerns?
I don't know if the concerns are toxic, but they're about toxic.
Toxic pollu, concerns over toxic pollution. Identify that used, used merchandise with drop-off in the service commercial should require a use permit because it was previously not referenced, and this would get to your used furniture concern. We are going to add a reference to the noise ordinance standards identified in the accessory music section of the zoning code. We're gonna clarify the definition of general retail, we're gonna recommend consignment as a permitted use generally, and there was some further direction to consolidate office uses further than provided, including surveyors and engineers, and, um, obviously to include winery offices if they don't allow tastings, and if those do want to allow tastings, we could leave those in the, as conditional. And then there's two parking lot items, as I call them, uh, things to park and come back to, and that is looking at no food in the tasting rooms, and then also wholesale nursery supplies, making sure we allow that to occur.
I'm not sure with no food in the tasting room was like, why are they restricted to be off-site, to be, yeah.
So look at the prohibition of cooking food at a tasting room. And then Senior Partner Heacock is identifying that there was also, oh, so we're gonna add, allow the exception to the variety store definition to clarify. Thank you so much, that'll be on to the city council for their review and action in a form of an ordinance.
Well, I think, I think a motion would be in order.
I move that the commission recommend that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as modified, um, in order to update and modify existing zoning code regulations related to permitted and conditional uses in the central business and the service commercial zoning districts.
Second.
Mr. Ponce?
Yes.
Monette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Okay, with that done, item five point three, um, is any action required, or is this just noted as being continued to a date cer?
Continued to a date certain, which is the next planning commission meeting. September eighteenth.
Very good. There are no scheduled matters, are there any department reports?
Just briefly, uh, for the commission and the, uh, public, we are going to, we anticipate publication of the general plan in the EIR sometime around the end of September, um, so please, the public should be aware of it, we are going to provide some additional review and comment periods, but obviously, um, coming into the holidays, the beginning of the school year, I know there's lots of distractions, and we just want to bring that attention to the public and the commission, um, to be aware of it and be ready for it, and then along those lines, we are also looking, beginning to look at dates where we will hold formal hearings on those items, and so, um, I would just request that the planning commission, please look at your vacation schedules and get those to me early, and then do every, as soon as you can, so that way we can try to, if you plan on taking a vacation or be absent, being absent during any time around the holidays, uh, please provide that to staff, as we do have two planning commission meetings the week of large holidays, and so, this year, and so we'd like to be ready for, um, ensuring we don't have any quorum issues, and, and obviously allowing you all to provide your input on those documents as we move them forward. And then just a reminder to the commission and the public that we often do cancel the first meeting of the year, which usually occurs right around New Year's Day, and so we will recommend that as well, uh, so the first meeting in January is likely to be canceled, but, so just start to look at your vacation calendars for the commissioners, please get them to us, and for the public, please be ready for those documents to be available for review and comment, and do your best to fit those into your very busy schedules.
Can we hold our first meeting with four of these on the table?
I want to know if you've rented the, rented the, rented the appropriate hall for the celebration party when the, um, general plan is certified.
We have not, I tend to not count chickens before they hatch, and I will say, when I moved into my office, I found a box of balloons that had twenty-thirty general plan printed on them.
Wow.
Just so you know.
Hubris.
And so I will not be making that order until we're a little farther along in the process. However, I do think a celebration will be in order once we get that adopted.
Well, we'll chip in and get you a Sharpie, you can redo all of them.
Well, it, it, it's too bad, um, Mr. McKelley is not here, I, I hope he's watching at home, because it is my recollection that back in the day, after a particularly momentous public meeting, uh, the decision-makers would often retire to the pastime, uh, to celebrate, but, uh, the past. the pastime to celebrate, but the pastime is no longer with us. So we have new choices.
It's past and past.
Chair, Chair Hardy, are you suggesting we revive some variation of that tradition?
You know, there, there are some ancient traditions we should consider reviving. I am absolutely suggesting that, and I think final action on a general plan would be an appropriate occasion for revival of these ancient traditions.
Well, I hope they include a lot of dance with conga drums and other so-called primitive instruments, because for those of us who don't drink, dancing would be wonderful, with amplified music that doesn't go beyond the walls of the, of the, of this.
We'll see what we can do, Commissioner Monette, and I believe that's it, and this meeting is adjourned.